We are recording.
Thank you. We're recording and we have six o'clock. Excellent. All right, everybody ready? Let's get the show on the road tonight. So, welcome, everybody. This is the Swamaco Village Board Meeting for Monday, June 19th, 2023. The time is 6:00 PM. At this time, I would like to call the meeting to order and a reminder, anyone who is coming forward, please speak clearly into the microphone, provide your name and address for the record, if you would. At this time, I would look for a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion from Trustee Rodden to approve this evening's agenda, and I have a second from Trustee Schneider. Are there any questions or concerns or issues that anyone would like to raise? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Let's stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. All right. To begin this evening, we have a special guest, a presentation from Brown County Sheriff's Office, water rescue process. Captain Rousseau is here, and Administrator Kaker, if you would introduce, please.
Sure, thank you. So you can come on up. At our previous board meeting, there was a brief discussion about water rescue calls made from the bay and who had jurisdiction. I reached out to Captain Rousseau with the Brown County Sheriff's Office and invited him to come speak tonight about their role and operational process whenever there is a distress call from the bay. So, thank you, Captain Rousseau, for coming out tonight, and I will see the floor to you.
Perfect. Thank you. Good evening. Like Administrator Kaker said, my name is John Rousseau. I'm the patrol captain for the sheriff's office. What I've done tonight is just prepare a quick 10-minute, basically about our marine unit or boat patrol, what resources we have, how that call-in process works, and then I'd be more than willing to field any questions that you have when I'm done with that, if that's okay. So, like we had mentioned previously, the first question came up about jurisdiction, and state statute actually gives jurisdiction on the Bay of Green Bay to the sheriff, and that jurisdiction extends, if you imagine a line from the southern border of O'Connell County, across the bay to the southern border of Door County, all the way south to the mouth of the Fox River. You've probably seen other jurisdictions do operate in the Bay of Green Bay, and that's done through a mutual aid agreement with the sheriff. So, that would be the Green Bay Police Department, Green Bay Metro Fire, New Franken Fire. Some of those other agencies also operate in the bay through a mutual aid agreement. The sheriff's office themselves, we've had a marine patrol unit for a substantial period of time, obviously because the water has always been a part of our area and our geography. We have in policy, that is the policy of the sheriff's office, to maintain a marine unit. And as part of that, the marine unit, we have five objectives that we use. The first one is to respond to calls for service, including search and rescue. And that could be anything. That could be from a boat on fire. It could be to somebody who's fallen off the boat into a water, any of the same calls of service that we have on land. The next one is enforce laws, and that's where you'll see us out there on the weekends doing the boat patrols. And that's everything from life jackets to boating while intoxicated, any of those types of things. Additionally, it's to provide mutual aid. So, if anybody requests help, any of the other agencies or jurisdictions on the bay request help, we're there to provide that mutual aid. Now, we also conduct security patrols. You see that most often during special events or during times when things are going on. So, a cruise ship comes in, or something big is going on in the area. That's when we do the security patrols. And then the fifth one is more the educational piece, and that's to promote the safe boating. So, we'll go out to the boating days. We'll talk to kids about life jackets. So, it's basically those elements. From the law enforcement side, it's the calls for service, the rescue, the other things, and then the enforcement, and then the safe boating part. As part of our procedures with our marine unit, we have in our policy that we require two sworn operators anytime that our boat goes in the water, and that's both for a safety and an operational thing. So, anytime that we want to go deploy on something, we have to have two sworn officers. Additional people are allowed on our vessels. So, some of those would be emergency management personnel, fire and rescue personnel, anything like that. So, we can't have other people jump on our boats and go help with whatever we're being called for. So, operationally, we will only use, and this sounds redundant, we only use the marine unit or the boat patrol to accomplish those five stated objectives. The one thing that we do not use the marine unit for is that's to tow or remove any grounded or disabled watercraft, unless there's an emergency. So, if somebody calls and says, hey, my boat broke down and I am tied up to somebody's dock on the Swamaco River, we would not respond to that disabled motorist in and of itself. We would respond, so, and again, we can what-if this all night, but if somebody is out in the middle of the bay, their boat breaks down, and there's a storm coming in, or there's somebody on there with some sort of medical issue or something like that, we absolutely would respond out in those situations. In the times that we would not, because it is a disabled motorist, we have a list of rescue and resource vehicles that would come out. So, on land, we would call it a tow truck. On the water, it would be something very similar. So, they would go out, they would tend to the maintenance part of the boat and then come in. So, our fleet has, generally, we have four boats. We have two 30-foot rigid hull boats. One is a Zodiac, and one is a Lake Assault. So, those are, the Zodiac boats, it's a rigid hull, but it's an inflatable, so it has the black sort of blow-up thing around the outside. Now, we also have our Thousand Island airboat, which is typically used during ice rescues. You'll see those. It's red and white. It looks like an airboat that you'd see in the Everglades. We would use that during ice or marsh or any of those, wherever the terrain is a little bit. It doesn't conduct, it's helped for a boat. And then we also have a smaller Boston Whaler boat, a 13-foot one. So, kind of a variety of them. So, for the big, normal patrol boats, we use the Zodiac and the Lake Assault. The airboat is used ice and marsh rescues, and then we have the Boston Whaler. So, generally, the way that the marine unit operates during the season, and I'll talk about that here in a second, during the season, our two boats that we normally use for patrol are stored at South Bay Marina. We have slips at South Bay. The airboat and the smaller Boston Whaler boat are stored at the sheriff's office. Out of season, everything, obviously, is out of the water. Typically, our season will go, and this is weather-dependent, Wisconsin weather, sometimes it's hard to say by this date to this date. Typically, it's late spring when the ice is all gone, and we know that it's going to be gone. And then that runs typically until mid to late October, right before it starts getting cold. We work with South Bay. They have to use our slip and maintenance and get the boats out of the water before the ice comes in. When the boats are in the water, so during the normal boating season, our response is to typically find the two operators of the boat, send them down to South Bay. They get into the boat, and then they respond to the scene. Out of season, it's a little bit different because the boats aren't in the water. Our operators will respond to the sheriff's office. They'll hook the boat up. They'll drive to the launch. They'll launch the boat, and then they'll drive to the scene. So, whenever we talk about response times, it's going to be different if it's in-season, out-of-season. We also need the operators, so it's getting operators to the boat and getting the boat out to the emergency. So, whenever we get a request for deploying the boat, we always look at those factors. Generally, you'll see, whenever a call is made for assistance or for mutual aid, the shift lieutenant or the supervisor on the scene will try to ask some very basic questions to make sure that the boat is the right resource. So, we have a number of different resources that could be water-based but don't necessarily require a boat, and I realize that was probably confusing. I'll try to explain that a little bit. So, we'll have a mutual aid request that says, hey, I need a boat, and I need it out here, and I need it out here right now. And we'll say, okay, what do you have? What's the situation? Is that the right resource for it? You know, maybe is a drone a better resource? Is having a car go onto shore a better resource? Things like that. So, we'll make sure that the resource is appropriate, but then we will absolutely start our call-in process, have them connect to the boat, have them get out onto the water, and then respond to that call for service. So, in a nutshell, that's our marine unit. That's our response to it. We do, over the course of the summer and during the season, we do weekly boat patrols. We also respond to emergencies and other calls for services as those come up. I'll be happy to field any questions that anybody has.
I have four. Do you ever find yourself shorthanded?
So, would I like to have everybody be able to operate the boat? Absolutely. I never find, we never find ourselves in a position where we're not able to find the resources that we need to. So, just by the nature of the sheriff's office and our job, we will make those phone calls, and we will get people there to get out there as fast as they possibly can. We also will use other resources, too. So, if we have maybe one operator, or our operator is a ways away, we will use those mutual aid agreements on the flip side and say, hey, our operator is an hour out. You know, Green Bay PD or Green Bay Fire, do you have anybody closer? We absolutely will do that. Coast Guard is another resource. DNR is a resource also.
So, what is your, if you were to kind of quantify it, what's your response time to, we'll just say, to an emergency, not to a tow or anything like that, but to an emergency?
Those are really, really hard questions to answer because it matters if it's in-season or out-of-season.
In-season.
If it's in-season, and then the next question is, how many operators do we have working? How close are they to South Bay? There's such a range that I'd be really hesitant to give you a timeline. If the boats were already in the water, we had two operators working, it would be very, very fast. If it was 2:00 in the morning and the boats were out of the water, that response time is going to be a little bit greater.
So, Southside does take them out every night?
I'm sorry?
They do take them out every night?
No, they do not.
Oh, they leave them?
During the season, they're in the water. They're in the water all season.
Okay.
We obviously only take them out when it freezes.
Okay. Can you give me a little bit of a range, then?
I'd be really hesitant to do that, just because of all the variables that go into it.
All right. So, you mentioned many of the boats that you currently have, many of the resources. Is there a greatest need? Like, do you feel like you're completely equipped? Or is there, like, you know what, we could use more of this type or that type?
So, resource availability is always a question, and, you know, I think with the resources that we have, I think we're well-equipped to handle any of the emergencies that are on the water. That said, if there are additional resources and something comes up, we would make use of those mutual aid agreements and things like that to get additional resources there.
Okay. Last question, then, number four. Can you elaborate a little bit about what a mutual aid agreement looks like?
So, a mutual aid agreement, I mean, in layman's terms, it essentially says, hey, the sheriff is saying, this authority is mine. It's given to me by the state of Wisconsin. I am requesting that if we need mutual aid or if we have a situation, I'm also going to confer some of that authority onto you. So, basically, Green Bay Police Department, Green Bay Metro Fire, New Franken Fire, I know that you have this resource on the water. Me, as the sheriff, am giving you the ability to use that resource on the water.
So, it's like another tool, new tool belt? Okay. That's my four questions. Thank you, President.
You keep on saying operators. How many operators do you have total?
So, our marine unit fluctuates up and down. In spring of this year, we're going to be right around 12.
12 out of how many road deputies?
96. And that's everybody who wears a uniform, generally.
How many calls of service for the boats do you get? Not, you know, pre-planned stuff. How many calls for service right away, emergencies?
So, I don't have specific numbers for how many we responded to outside of the normal patrol. So, it'd be hard for me to say that, where we have to send an operator to the boat to put them in the water. Sometimes in summer, we try to staff our patrols to coincide when the greatest need for calls are. So, sometimes you'll have those calls, and our boat will already be on the water. So, our normal patrol deputies will be out there doing their patrol, and a call will come up. Obviously, then the response time is almost down to...
I just wanted to know how many times. The response time, it's just how many times are you being asked to do it? When I'm trying to get at?
Yeah, and I don't have those numbers with me tonight.
Do you have a sense?
A ballpark? 20?
Per season?
Per season? 30?
I, you know what?
And I know it does this. I know.
Per day?
It varies. We generally will have spurts, and we'll have spurts in the beginning of the season, and then we'll go a couple of months without any. We do not deploy the boat weekly. For an unplanned call.
Have you ever said, no, we're not responding to that for a call for service that requires a boat?
No.
You never have?
No. And my only caveat to that would be unless the boat is not appropriate a resource.
That way, we got that.
Right.
Is there a, if you had a boat, your operators were off doing something, and another call for service came in, who do you call?
That also needed a boat?
Yeah.
So, just like we would for anything else, if that boat is able to break free, then we would break them free.
They're busy.
If they're not, then we'd use the same mutual aid partners. So, Green Bay Police, Green Bay Metro Fire, Coast Guard, DNR.
Is there a hierarchy? Is there a list, or is it just?
A lot of times, it's who has the fastest response.
Okay. Other questions?
Would you appreciate, obviously, you know why you're here. We have an anonymous donor that's willing to give us, you know, basically $200,000 boat. The sheriff's department would probably love that, right? To have another nice boat. Would you encourage this board to accept that donation to have another resource out on the bay, in your professional opinion?
Let me answer that question this way. I don't want to take the position on what this board shouldn't shouldn't do, but whatever resources are in the county, we would use those resources as necessary.
Do you think, in your opinion, it's important to have more resources than less resources? Depending on where it is in the bay. You know, if you can't get up to the Swamaco River or you can't get to the first big buoy out there, is it better to have more resources or less resources?
Yeah. I mean, I think it's important to have all the resources necessary to respond to whatever emergency happens out there.
Okay.
Other questions for Captain Rousseau?
Appreciate you coming in.
Yeah, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Very educational.
Appreciate all the information. Thank you very much, and your patience taking our questions. Our intrepid trustees.
Thank you.
Collecting all the important information. Thank you. All right.
Oh, boy.
I appreciate that. So, we have another item with regard to this coming up, correct?
Yes.
So, at this point, though, so after that presentation, we want to move on to the next presentation, which is, pardon me?
Did you just ask a question?
5B, Village of Swamaco, 2022 Financial Audit Report. Director Magar and Amber Driswinski. Thank you.
Now, for the most exciting portion of your evening. The presentation of the 2022 final audit.
Kay, anytime you're on the spot, it's the most exciting part of our evening.
Okay. So, Amber's gonna present it since it basically is her, not her judgment, but my performance on financials and objective analysis of it or whatever, opinion. So, here she goes.
Thanks for coming, Amber.
No problem. Thank you for having me. So, I think I've most familiar faces. But as Kay mentioned, I'm Amber Driskin, the principal on the engagement from Clifton Larson Allen or CLA. If you have any questions as we go through this, please feel free to interrupt. I'm gonna go through it kind of quick, and you can follow up with any questions, whether it's tonight or, and Alex, both have my contact information. Feel free to reach out at any time.
Thank you.
So, I know, I think you probably have a PDF copy and the bound copy that I delivered tonight. So, I'm gonna go to page one and the independent auditor's report. On the top, it has our opinions. So, we've audited the accompanying financial statements of the governmental activities, the business-type activities, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information of the Village of Swamaco as of and for the year ended, December 31st, 2022. The second paragraph states that, in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the village as of December 31st, 2022. That's a clean, unmodified opinion, the highest opinion we can provide from an audit standpoint. That next paragraph talks about the basis for the opinion. We don't look at all the transactions of the village. We use a test-based, risk-based approach and use materiality thresholds and so forth. So, that discloses that information. The final paragraph, the emphasis is a matter. There wasn't new GASB standard for 2022. It was leases. So, that was a little, a fair amount of work between Kay, Megan, our team, to implement that. And that's reviewing, what that standard did was take all your, any operating and capital leases, put them on the same playing field. They tried, but we all know standards. It doesn't always happen that way. So, they tried. And then it had us record lease receivables. So, I'm gonna talk about that in a little bit here because that did directly affect your financial statements in a material way. So, that statement, that paragraph is saying that we did implement GASB Statement 87 for 2022. You will have a similar statement being implemented in 2023, which is GASB 96 as it relates to subscription-based softwares, and very similar to the lease standard.
Okay.
Then, I'm gonna go to page 13, which is the statement of net position for the government-wide. And the government-wide, the difference between the government-wide and the fund financials is that the government-wide includes all of your long-term activity, your capital assets, your debt, your Wisconsin retirement system proportionate share, and so forth, and some additional, I'm gonna say some of the leases, but some of that's on the fund financials as well. So, the governmental activities, you're gonna see a lease receivable for $398,000 with a corresponding deferred inflow. That has previously never been on the books. That lease is for the county rescue portion of the building that is rented at the fire station.
So, the value of that lease over the term is 300, what?
$398,000.
Over the term, and it's a 14-year lease?
I believe...
Is this the EMS?
Yes.
15?
So, it takes the total amount. It applies a present value calculation to it.
Ah, I love you people.
And then that's where we come up with $398,000. So, significant numbers that kind of stand out to people. But again, there is a corresponding deferred inflow, so it does not affect the bottom line, and you will see that in the general fund as well. So, that is recorded in the general fund and on this government-wide financials here. And so, then, I guess maybe I just want to point out, you also have $176,000 in the business-type activities for the leases. That did not change as a result of the standard, and that is the prepayment for the water tower lease. So, that amount is still, because you already received the cash, there's no receivable to record, and that's just being recognized now over the continuous life of the agreement, which is how it was originally. So, you might say, well, why didn't that change? That's the reason, because you received the cash upfront.
Because we already received the money. The lease is ongoing.
Correct. So, if you would have any, say you build a new water tower and you have a new lease, you would see a lease receivable and a deferred inflow for that as well, so.
Okay.
So, the total net position there at the bottom is about, for governmental activities, excuse me, is $38 million. The net investment and capital assets portion of that is $30 million. The other item within that net position that I want to draw your attention to is that wetland mitigation trust. We did move the, with the village receiving credits in 2022, the wetland mitigation bank went from an enterprise fund to a special revenue fund. So, it is now underneath the governmental activities as it more-so fit that definition versus an enterprise fund. And that amount is required to be set aside in a trust, and that's restricted for that purpose only.
I'm sorry. So, the $20,774 is restricted for the wetland mitigation?
Correct. And that's a part of the agreement with the DNR.
That's the long-term maintenance fund that, you know, after we do everything that we need to do, which might be 10 years from now, there is gonna be this separate group that has control of this pot of money that can use it for future maintenance.
Understood.
And that cash is restricted as well on the financials. Then I'm gonna go to page 16. I realize I skipped the business type, but I'm gonna get into that in more detail later. So, page 16, here's your fund financials, and I primarily want to comment on the fund balance of your major funds. So, your debt service fund, the fund balance was just over $28,000. Your capital improvements, about $3.2 million, and those are all earmarked, which I'll explain what those earmarks look like. And then your capital construction, which was the fire station that is now spent. The general fund has total fund balance of just shy of $1.2 million, with unassigned fund balance of $1.36 million. That's just over your policy. Your policy is to be 25% of the budgeted general fund expenditures for the subsequent year. That would equal out to $1,290,000, and you're at $1,369,000. So, over that, so right within your policy. And you have, most of the time, we'd say you want to be anywhere between the 20 and 30%, depending on your cash flow, trying to prepare for any unexpected capital needs, et cetera. The village has a very healthy capital improvement fund that you've kind of been earmarking things for over time. But as always, continue to evaluate what those capital needs are and what those funding sources are, which you do a great job of that with your capital plan. And so, just want to mention that. Then I'm gonna go to page 23. This is a statement of net position for the proprietary funds. Just a couple of things I want to pull out here are the cash balances. The water utility had a cash balance, operating cash balance of about $549,000 as of December 31st, 2022. The sewer utility, about $1.6 million. Garbage and recycling, 654, and then your non-major funds, 410. Water has restricted cash of $1.4 and sewer, $1.3. The big thing with water and sewer is just continuing to evaluate what those capital needs are. We did go through the rate case, and that was submitted. Public hearing happened, all those rates. But continuing to kind of look forward in those capital needs, just to make sure that those rates are sufficient for operating needs primarily. We've seen a fair amount of clients who kind of fall behind on some of that and start having to borrow for some maintenance-type items, and that's not a position you want to be in. So, you guys have done a good job of that, so just want to make sure we talk about that a little bit.
Did your calculations contribute to our rate case, which we're gonna be discussing this evening?
The 2022?
Yes.
The forecast, the forecast was in there, but the actuals were not because the rate case was submitted in January.
Okay. So, you helped by submitting that forecast to that?
Yes. Yeah, those were all part of that. And the capital for 2022 is in there as well. So, if we go to page 25, the net position for the water utility is about $12.5 million, with 9.8 of that being your investment and your infrastructure, very heavy into the capital, which an enterprise fund should be. The sewer utility, about $21.8 million in total net position, about $16.2 in net investment in capital. And there are restrictions throughout water and sewer, both for impact fees, capital projects, which could be required, equipment replacement funds, et cetera, from the DNR, and then the pension benefits, which is the Wisconsin retirement system, but that's fairly small. Your unrestricted net position, those are, I'm gonna say they're healthy, but those can change quickly depending upon what kind of maintenance needs to be done in a year. And that's hard to, in the general fund, we talk about that 25%. In the utility, that's hard to put a number on. So, that's where it's kind of, are you able to generate enough cash flow from an operating standpoint, which I'm gonna talk about the cash flows next here, from an operating standpoint to cover your debt and your capital and kind of really look forward at that maintenance? And when you start dipping into that, that's when this number becomes not enough, especially if it's for routine. If it's for a one-time thing, that's something that you can then rebuild over. But if it's routine, that's where we have a problem.
What's an example of that?
Payroll.
Oh, payroll.
Payroll would be reoccurring. If you're gonna dip into your operating cash for that, that would be something that, obviously, your rates aren't to where they need to be. If you have a one-time water tower repainting, excuse me, that would be something. Or if you have, you know, some significant main breaks, et cetera, that would be something.
That'd be a one-time thing, but not a...
Yeah. Sewer, you know, you can have some pump replacements.
So, obviously, you want to rebuild, you want to build that account to cover your monthly...
Yes. And that's what the PSC does in the water rate case with the rate of return. They build that in. So, that's the expectation, is that you are building that. And the same thing on the sewer side, when the village board sets the rates, the idea is that you're not just setting your rates for a one-year period, that you want to think about what's that long-term outlook look like, and how can I build a little bit over time versus saying, I'm gonna, I need 20% now? It's kind of the idea behind that.
Thank you.
So, I'm gonna skip 27 and 28 on the income statement side because there's the non-cash depreciation, Wisconsin retirement system in there, so I want to talk about the cash flows. So, on page 29, the water utility generated cash flows from operating activities of about $442,000. And there were cash from the pilot payment and so forth of deficit of $182,000, and then cash from debt and capital acquisitions of about $211, coming to a total change in cash equivalents of about $60,000. So, a positive year in the water there. 2021, you did have the water tower repainting, so that was, you know, there was a deficit, and your rate of return reflects that. In 2021, I believe the rate of return was negative 1.5. Now, it's about 4.2 in 22. So, the sewer generated about $655,000 from operations, and the acquisition of capital assets and principal paid on debt was 524, leading to a surplus of $146,000. So, a good year there as well. Recycling and garbage, there's not much activity in there other than the revenues in and the transfers out. So, pretty, pretty stable and healthy there. Any questions on... On any of those before I jump?
I guess I do have a question. So, on the garbage and recycling, if I'm understanding this correctly, we grew that fund by $121,000 last year. Is there a particular reason why we continue to grow that when it's just a service, you know, other than paying for containers and... You know, other than paying for containers and...
I think we were trying to get to the six-month operating mark.
Is that what it is?
I think that's what we're, the target.
Okay.
And is that the same with sewer utility as well?
I think with the sewer and water, I think we're going for twelve months on that one.
Twelve months operational capital?
Yeah.
Oh, we were only at like a three-month with garbage recycling for a while.
Okay.
Okay, makes sense.
And I think it's hard to, to judge or predict because of the recycling. You know, sometimes we make money, sometimes we pay in.
Right.
Okay.
Excellent, then I'm gonna skip all the way back to page eighty-nine before I go into the, some of the other side information. So as part of the audit, we review the internal controls of the village. We don't issue an opinion on those internal controls, but we would be required to disclose any findings or non-compliance. And the, page eighty-nine talks about the difference, differences there. We do have one finding here for preparation of the annual financial report. And that's common. I think ninety-five percent of our clients, we prepare our, the financial statements for. The disclosures, the complexities, the ever-changing standards. It just makes sense when we have, have the data and the templates. And there was no, no non-compliance that we were required to disclose, so.
Good.
Very good. Then, I know I touched on, there is a staple document called summary financial information, and I touched on a lot of this, but feel free to, to page through that as well. It breaks out all of the fund balances for all the governmental funds. You will see the wetland bank underneath the special revenue fund. That does have a deficit fund balance of three hundred and eighty-six thousand. That'll change as you continue to sell credits and et cetera. So over time, that's where that will be important to look at. Right now is a one-year, one-year shot, and it was the movement from the enterprise fund. So there were costs from years ago that came into that. Your TIDS, TID one has a fund balance of three hundred and twenty-three thousand. TID two, two hundred and thirteen thousand. TID four, five hundred and two thousand. And the unreimbursed project costs are, for TID one, six hundred and sixty-seven thousand. For TID two, four hundred and eight. And TID four, a deficit of five hundred and two thousand. Or no, over-recovered, excuse me. Vice versa, let's look that. And the cemetery permanent fund has a hundred and four thousand in, in fund balance. I said the capital improvements of the three-point-two on page three of the summary financial information. All of the amounts earmarked, and that's done through your budget process, and Kay reviews that as well. Most of that is one-point-six million for equipment replacement, and then road reconstruction of six hundred and eighty-one thousand, and future capital improvements from a general perspective of about five hundred and thirty-six. And some odds and ends. Otherwise, I think I went through most of that, but if there's questions, feel free to let me know. The last document is the governance communication that we're required to, to provide. So on page one, again, talks about what we audited, talks about the implementation of GASB statement eighty-seven, and then goes into the accounting estimates for the depreciable life of your capital assets, the accumulated sick leave, and the, the net pension asset and liability. No uncorrected misstatements and no material corrected misstatements. No disagreements with management, no difficulties. Kay stepping in, it was a smooth transition, the work Jessica did before and what Kay did after, so. Thank you, appreciate it. A very clean, made for, makes for a clean audit and a, a good working relationship, so we appreciate that. And then the rest of this document is management taking responsibility for the financial statements. Any questions?
I do not, I appreciate the comprehensive...
Thank you.
Detail on this.
Thank you much.
If there's any questions, feel free to reach out, as I said, they have my...
Do you ever get any questions outside of this meeting?
Sometime, not from, not from you guys, but some clients do, so. Always have to offer it up.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Never to change that.
Good job. Good work from, good, good, good work by administration Kay and cohort, and thank you. What?
I said, and previous.
And previous, yes, very good, thank you.
And then previous to the previous.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amber.
Okay. So those were our presentations for the evening. We are on to item number six, which is public appearances. So at this time, anyone in, in the audience who would like to come forward and discuss any issue not on the agenda, please come forward, provide your name and address. Let us know what's on your mind, anyone. Go once, go twice, seeing no one, we'll go to item number seven. Item number seven this evening is the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of the previous minutes of the village board dated June fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. Item B, April, two thousand and twenty-three animal control report. Item C, May, two thousand and twenty-three municipal court report. Item D, May, two thousand and twenty-three treasurer's report. Item E, resolution two-three-zero-two-three approving amended fee schedule replacement cart fee, replacement refuse cart fee. Item F, temporary class B picnic license for Saint Benedict Parish picnic, April, uh, April, August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. G, May, two thousand and twenty-three fire department report. And item H, May, two thousand and twenty-three recreation report. Is there discussion on these items?
Number nine in the notes, in the...
Minutes?
Minutes. Says motion carries unanimously six-one. How can it be unanimously?
I will rectify that, thank you.
Trustee Eckert.
I had a question on the check register. What is, I'm just curious what this is. Spring trapping for muskrat control, two thousand dollars.
Yeah, we contract somebody to trap our muskrats in all of our stormwater facilities.
Okay.
So he does a spring and a fall trap.
Okay.
Yep.
Just wondering what that was, thank you. I'll motion to approve if everybody's good.
May I ask a question first?
Sure.
Thank you. And then, so I'm, on the April, two thousand and twenty-three health premiums, how many employees are covered by that?
Uh, twenty-four?
Twenty-four?
Ish? Twenty-five, says Michelle.
Health premiums are over two thousand an employee on average?
They're close to that, yes.
Thank you.
There is a motion on the floor to approve this evening's consent agenda. One question for our director from Park and Rock. Do you have a number on the, the pickleball on the seventeenth? Sign up?
Yeah, sixteen.
Sixteen as well? So it was sixteen before, so you've maxed out three times on that?
Twice.
Twice on that, okay.
The May and the June.
Wow, all right.
And the July, July, August coming up.
Thank you. Motion on the floor from trustee Eckert to approve this evening's consent agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second from trustee Oramus. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries seven-zero. Thank you. Okay, item number eight, A, planning and zoning. Requested by Big Sky Real Estate for final plat approval for Shidi Farms addition on SU six-eight-eight as prepared by Mountain Associates Verbeacher, located on the northeast corner of Westline Road and West Point Road. Zoning administrator Dunks.
Thank you, we are looking at a, just under eleven-acre portion of the preliminary plot that is being brought forward as a final. The preliminary was approved at your June fifth meeting with four conditions. The first condition was the restrictive covenants that were on page two. We had asked it to be filed as a separate document. We've finally got some response back from some research, and the language is sufficient on the front, or on the document itself, that they can remain on that document. Brown County would prefer that they remain on that document. But we have asked for additional language in the initial paragraph of those restrictive covenants, which will state that the village of Swamaco is not responsible for enforcing these covenant. The second condition was completion and approval of a stormwater plan. We do have the stormwater plan for the, these eight lots that has been approved. There is an easement between lots fifteen and sixteen that is actually designed for the future needs of the remaining portion of that preliminary plot, not for this phase of it. But it felt it was better to have it on there now. We may or may not need it for that northern phase, but it's easier to remove it than it is to try and get that easement after the properties have been sold and improved. The approval and signing of a developer's agreement, because there is no road involved, no sewer or water, that also is not needed for this portion, this final plat. And then the other was to meet the requirements of all applicable ordinances, regulations, and reviewing agencies. All lots do appear to meet the zoning requirements for rural residential in this area. The parkland fees will actually be due at building permit now. We would have administrative fees of two hundred dollars per lot, or sixteen hundred dollars, due at the signing of the final plat. Your planning and zoning commission did recommend approval with the three conditions, the language for that restrictive covenant, the payment of the fees, and then all other requirements. Thank you.
Thank you, are there questions?
You say they've already done the stormwater management plan?
Yes.
Did they do the one to the south, too? That's not complete? Oh, they are both complete. I thought you were still working on that.
Uh, well, for the full sites on the north and the south, like whole property in general. But we've completed the sewer management plan for the eight lots on the north and the eight lots on the south. We're working on a comprehensive one for both sides, the full, was it forty acres on the south side and forty on the north side.
Yeah, can, how much longer before that's gonna get completed? Because, you know, we're taking parts of these, these two subdivisions, and we're approving them. But if we have a stormwater management issue, you know, it's not just on these little sections, it's gonna be on the whole.
Well, there won't be anything at this time, and there won't be anything in the future. It just depends on when it goes. It'll be the design that, you know, fits the requirements of the stormwater management plan, so. You know, we talked about with the developer, by doing the eight lots first, we have to design it as such so that it treats those eight lots, but then you might not factor in something with the northerly part of that north property, because you already took away the eight lots up front, so now you have to treat them separately. But we're working, working it all together, so it will meet our stormwater ordinance.
All right, my only concern, especially lot eight in the first subdivision, I know that's not on the schedule tonight, but it impacts this whole subdivision. There are some folks that showed up at the last planning and zoning meeting that were very concerned about the water flow on, and where it goes on the site. And I just want to make sure, you know, let's say lot eight sells, and they need a bigger retention pond on that site. What do, how do we enforce, or how do, how do we enforce it?
It would have to go, well, it won't matter for the first eight lots. It'd be if we have to utilize that stormwater device for the second phase.
So you'd have to take it out of the second phase and take care of it there, okay.
We would have the developer dedicate enough property in and outlaw on the second phase to accommodate that stormwater management.
All right, I just want to make sure...
With no water, I mean, they have to meet our total suspended solids and our peak flow, our PSS and peak flow. Water will not leave that site, any of these sites, any faster than it does today, post-development.
Perfect.
So just to make sure I understand this appropriately, so, so the stormwater management plan for these eight lots, let's just say it's, it's not sufficient. Then it would have to, the, the stormwater plan for the next series of lots would have to incorporate that fix for these eight?
So they're, they are, it's sufficient.
It is sufficient.
We wouldn't have approved it, we designed it, we approved it.
Okay, for, for a hundred-year event?
Re- reviewed and checked, yep. That the stormwater management plan for the first eight lot on the south and the first eight lot on the north is satisfactory, meets our, the, our requirements and DNR requirements.
Okay, good.
The, the big issue, the biggest contributor to those needs are additional roads. And because both of these came with eight lots without any additional road surface, it was easier to meet those requirements. The risk is with the developer, because that, now, when they go to do the section with the roads, they lost the ability to use any portion of these eight lots for part of their infiltration sediment removal and whatnot, so.
The more grass you have, the more, the more surface area you have, reduces your amount of infiltration that you'll need, so. Now they took off whatever the amount of acreage is, you know, that's now cannot be modeled towards your next phase of the development. And then they're putting the road in on the next two phases, so you're gonna have much more impervious versus grass or, or green space.
So a more robust stormwater treatment.
But you'll just need a, a larger area to treat the water.
Yeah.
So that's, and again, that goes to my whole concern, because we don't typically break them apart like this. I mean, if we get a plot, it's usually the whole subdivision. You know, it could be phase one and phase two across the road, but it's still the whole. And this is kind of unique that they're breaking it up.
Yep.
Um, I just want to make sure that we're set for the future.
Yep.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments from the board for administrator Dunks? No?
I make a motion to approve the final plot of Shidi Farm first addition with the following conditions. A restrictive covenant on page two needs to add additional language. As such, village of Swamaco is not responsible for enforcing these covenants. Uh, number two, payment of a sixteen-hundred-dollar administration fee, and then it meets the requirements of all applicable ordinances, regulations, and reviewing agencies.
Thank you, we have a motion on the floor from trustee Rodden. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from trustee Andrews to that motion. Is there any other further discussion or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries six to one. All right, thank you. We are on to item eight-B, request by James and...
Hold on one second.
Request by James and Jeannie Bostek for approval of a one-lot certified survey map as prepared by Aaron Ballas, TNT Professional Land Surveyors Incorporated, parcel SU twenty-two, located on the south side of Brown Road, five hundred feet east of Sandberg Trail, zone rural residential. Zoning administrator Dunks.
Thank you, the parcel being created is six acres. The total of the parent is twenty-nine-point-seven. It does have a conditional use for a hobby farm, and is being used for that, and some ag use along with the single-family home that's on it today. The lot does appear to meet all code requirements. Sewer and water services are not available and not expected anytime soon. This lot does have substantial wetlands, but does contain the required buildable area. The wetland delineation did flag the entire ditch as wetlands, so there is an ESA buffer required on that. And typically, we would require documentation from the DNR for that crossing. But in this instance, we did suggest a note on the CSM, which requires that approval before issuance of any driveway permit or placement of any culvert. Brown County may also require approvals of an ESA amendment. At this time, it's difficult to say how the home is gonna be placed on that limited buildable area. We don't know if the garage would be on the west side of the home or the east side. So it's really hard to get permission from the DNR for a wetland crossing if you don't know where you want to put your driveway, which is why we suggested the note on the certified survey map. Again, parkland fees currently at three hundred would be due at the collection of the building permit, no longer at the signing of the certified survey map. In two thousand and nine, a conditional use was approved on the entire parcel for that hobby farm. One of the conditions was that it would be up for review should any land division occur. With just the single lot, we did suggest that only consideration be the removal of that conditional use on the lot being created, and the main parcel be allowed to maintain that hobby farm. It's still twenty-three-plus acres, which is plenty large enough for the activities that they're doing on there. A five-acre parcel, zone ag, has no restrictions on it whatsoever, so we're comfortable with the twenty-three with this conditional use. Planning and zoning commission did recommend approval with the three conditions. Adding a third note, requiring the proper permits and approvals for that wetland ESA amendment. The six-acre lot will be removed from the area affected by the two thousand and nine conditional use approval, and then meeting requirements of all other applicable ordinances, regulations, and reviewing agencies. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions on this item from zoning administrator Dunks?
Not so much for Mr. Dunks, but it was noted at that planning and zoning meeting, and, and Mr. Dunks mentioned it about our ditches being flagged as wetlands. They're ditches. They're there... They're there for a reason. They're there to move water. I think that we have to be very careful with where this goes, because this directly could affect Andy's business and the way he operates in this village. I mean, if we have to start getting approvals from the DNR to clean out our ditches, we have some real issues in Swamaco, because, what would you say, sixty percent of them hold water most of the time? Seventy percent of them hold water most of the time?
Yeah, the only time we have to get approval now is if it's considered, yeah.
Right.
Which a lot of them, basically east of JR, any east-west road is almost flagged as wet, or out and out of the way now.
And this is one of the first times that we've actually had our ditches flagged as wetlands, correct, Mr. Dunks?
In this situation where it was only the ditch, I mean, the part to the west, it's understandable, you know, the whole section all the way back through the property is nothing but wetlands. I don't have any issue with that. Yes, it does concern me when it's just the ditch. The, the ditch was man-made. Its purpose is to have channel water. It's going to be wet. It's wet land. It's, it's ridiculous to, to take it to this extent, but, you know.
What was the takeaway from plan, we had a takeaway from planning and zoning, I think it was back to staff to do something with this, wasn't it?
Yeah, I think we're just gonna, we're gonna pay more attention to it and see if this continues, but...
Right. This trend can't continue, is basically what we were saying, because it's going to affect our operations and how we do things in this village. And I think that the DNR is overstepping.
Well, it's the delineators that are approved by the DNR that, that are taking these steps, not...
And was that delineators hired by the consultant?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe so.
So you can pick who your delineators are?
So, the note on this, I think, now that I remember back to planning and zoning, the note on this was, and I failed to talk to the administrator about this, the note on this was to make our representatives aware of this item, that this is something that's, that's going on. I mean, we want to nip this in the bud and make sure that our representatives know that we've got a lot of ditches here, and this is going to create some real issues. Just to get out ahead of it, to put, you know, a dog-eared page in, in the file, so that when this goes forward, that's all. Thank you.
Can we have Aaron come up real quick just to introduce himself? Because if I, I want to ask you a question about that, because this is an important issue for us. I, I think this issue is, could create some havoc.
We've got to be a little, we're just going to be a little bit careful about...
So, Aaron, when, is this the first time that you've seen ditches flagged by, so this is not uncommon?
Not at all.
Okay.
Don, Don Wrightstone, last year we had one that was similar to this, and the, the wetland in the ditches was of a nature that we could have it deemed, you know, not a wetland by the DNR, but it took special paperwork and some DNR review, so...
And, and cost on that property owner, correct?
I'm sorry?
Cost to the property owner to, to give them a...
I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure. I, I didn't hire the delineator myself in that one. They chose a delineator than the one I normally use.
Okay.
And that's, that's how it was handled.
All right.
And you might recall, too, we had the same issue when we were building Fire Station One. We had to get a special exemption to put in the driveway for that ditch.
We did, yep. I'll let you mention it.
So I just, I don't want undue hardships, and you said there wouldn't be an undue hardship to this property owner to put that culvert in. They're not going to harass him.
The DNR realizes that people need to access their property, and they have permits for that reason. It's not like it's going to be drug through the mud for a year and a half before they'll issue the permit, you know, it's, it's pretty standard. That's about all I can tell you.
No, I, I appreciate it.
The world we live in right now with, with Wisconsin having a state agency govern our wetlands instead of the Army Corps of Engineers like it is in every other state, our state's unique, because of the par grab the DNR's done, so, that's my opinion, take it or leave it.
No, I appreciate it.
But, I mean, every DOT job you, you go to, they flag all them, them ditches. And then, you know, you got one state agency, you know, pulling permit from another one, and then the, the mitigation that you're, you guys have a fund for, that happens. So this is all taxpayer money.
Yeah, it's a lot of bureaucracy.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, this is, this is the reality we live in.
But we can't mitigate this, this evening.
No, but it's good information.
It is good information. By all means.
So, have you seen a situation where the ditches are, are, I guess, recorded as wetlands, but all the surrounding area isn't? So, in an area that would have not been wetlands before, and ditches were then put in?
Yep.
Have you actually seen a delineation that follows the ditches alone?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
And that's, you know, I mean, the DNR says if it looks like a duck, it quacks like a duck, it walks like a duck, it must be a duck. And we all know what ditches do, so they're ducks, in their opinion.
Three, three quarters. I think, I think, I think, I think that's great. Thank you.
Well, I'm just...
Nope, you're right. You nailed it. But that was, I think that that's an excellent statement to move on with the rest of this. I think you encapsulated it perfectly right there.
You basically have three quarters of this frontage that only the ditch is flagged wetlands.
Yep, yep. And it's probably not, and it's not the first time, and it's not going to be the last time, but as long as we make folks aware that we're aware of this and concerned, that's all we can do. Thank you.
Yep. For the record, Aaron Ballas, TNT Professional Land Surveyors.
Thank you. It's free advertising.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you for coming.
Okay. Other questions, concerns on this item? If not, I would offer a motion to approve the one-lot certified survey map for James and Jenny Bostek, as prepared by Aaron Ballas on parcel SU twenty-two, with the following conditions: One, a third note be added to Page Two requiring the proper permits and approvals for a wetland crossing ESA amendment prior to issuance of any driveway permits or building permits from the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources in Brown County. Two, the six-acre lot being created will be removed from the area affected by the two thousand nine conditional use approval for SU twenty-two. And three, meet the requirements of all other applicable ordinances, regulations, and reviewing agencies.
Second.
Thank you. I have a second from Trustee Andrews. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ballas, for your, for your free counsel.
All right. We're on to item number nine, Resolution two-three-zero-two-one, anonymous donation. Chief Bertler?
Thank you. As stated at the last Village Board meeting, an anonymous donor was willing to make a contribution of two hundred thousand dollars to the Swamaco Fire Department for a fire rescue boat. Additional information was requested at that last meeting. Below in the memo is the three additional costs that would, would pertain to this boat. The insurance is around a little over four hundred dollars a year. The boat training class, which we'd probably send two people for the first year or two, would rebound about five hundred, so we wouldn't continue that forever. And then annual maintenance, pretty much it would just be changing the oil and the filters. We wouldn't winterize this, because it's kept inside. So, looking at about eleven hundred dollars, that would probably go down, you know, I kind of kept that consistent. We're going to lose the training part, but the insurance might go up and the annual maintenance might go up. So, looking at around a thousand dollars a year for continual maintenance on that. And then, also was requested was the amount of calls. For that past few years, it's been between three and six calls for calls on the Bay of Green Bay that we've...
To Swamaco that we've responded to.
Correct, that we've responded to. So I don't know if there's any questions off that. So, in the packet, is the, just one of the boats, it's a boat similar to the Sheriff's Department, what the Sheriff's Department has, New Franken Fire. So, it's not the boat, it's just one boat that we kind of saw, settled with some vendors, yeah. And, and kind of, just got some rough estimates on, on numbers on the cost it would be, so...
Are you able to incur those costs that you bullet point here into your existing budget?
Yeah, so the first year or two, those, that, those, those costs would be covered by the donation. The donation, just the, the cost of the boat would be just a little bit under that, so the first year or two, that donation would cover those costs. And then, the association at their, I've spoken with the president this year, and they want to raise funds for continual maintenance of that boat, so that is kind of their, what they want to...
For a net zero?
Correct. That is kind of what they're, they're going to put out for, what we're raising money for, for the association this year, is for the cost of the boat, is, is to help offset any costs and maintenance, stuff like that, so...
How many operators are, because the captain said he has twelve out of ninety-six, how many personnel do you have?
So we have forty now. Not everybody enjoys the water, not everybody is going to be able to...
How many are you looking for?
We're probably looking at around that, around that same average, probably around twelve, fifteen, that would operate the boat.
Twelve out of forty, because they have twelve out of ninety?
Yeah, we're, I mean, we have a lot of boaters, so we're not looking for everybody to operate the boat, but we're looking for people to, basically to drive it. I mean, we're not looking for the whole department to be certified in it, but we're kind of looking...
Looking at a good third of it.
Yeah, a good third. I mean, like I said, so this boat class is more of a specialized training, it's not how to drive a boat, it's...
Is it something that has to be renewed?
That is, that I do not believe so. That is just a kind of a one or, it's a two-day class that teaches you some more advanced skills. So, like New Franken Fire, they obviously take a, we do trainings on Tuesday, they do training on Mondays, we would train the personnel on that time, too.
So one suggestion that came from the presentation here, so if you break down that percentage, right, you're looking at about fourteen percent of the police forces trained in operating that boat. I don't know that we need fourteen percent here.
Correct, I mean...
But, training two, I think you need, I think you should have at least three, because the, the captain stated that he always has two individuals on that boat. I wouldn't want one individual to go out on that boat.
Correct. Yeah, we would have, we would, so we would put additional firefighters on that boat. We would train everybody to how to respond, but we wouldn't have, everybody wouldn't drive the boat, because some people just don't want to drive the boat, they're, you know, operators, engineers.
How can you have a quick response time if you're storing it inside?
Just by the, the sheer distance and, and location. Like I said, the Sheriff's Department is coming from the east side of Green Bay, so in order for them to come over to, you know, long-tail, little-tail type thing, it's going to take them, just to, I mean, even if they're in the water, if they're on the east side of Green Bay, it's going to take them twenty minutes, in essence, probably.
So you're going to pull it out of the fire station and launch it at the Brown County launch?
We would at the Swamaco boat landing.
Okay.
How long do you think it will take from call to being out in the bay?
So we have a boat right now, it's a, it's kind of a little dinghy boat, so we've, you know, ventured out there a little bit, as, we can't go that far, because it's, we don't want to capsize. But I would say our average, now, during the day, we have staffing, so it's going to be a lot faster response than at nights and weekends. But we can usually get that boat in in probably ten minutes, in what we're...
Go in and out to the bay?
Correct. Well, yeah, I mean, depending where the location is, like, like the captain stated...
All I'm asking for is just how, how long do you get to the launch, to the bay, anywhere from there is...
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would say, in average, about ten minutes.
Could we, could we...
I mean, don't quote me on that hard number, but...
No, never would.
It's probably a little bit light, because it's a no-wake zone in the river, so...
Correct, so you mean, like I said...
It's probably fifteen minutes.
Depending on where you're going in the bay.
By the time you get to the mouth of the bay.
Correct, depending where you're in the bay.
Hold on, it's not a no-wake zone when it's an emergency.
Yeah, we might be.
Could we investigate, looking at, you know, a, a potential slip? Like, would, would there be a donation? Would we be able to keep the boat in the water at one of our...
So we have talked to a few people on the Swamaco River, and we've, we've looked at a few other areas, but we do have permission to keep it there for the summer. We have not, obviously, gone much further, just because we want to, we're not going to investigate if we're, you know, didn't receive it, so...
Yeah.
But we do, we do have a few people that I've, we've talked to that would be willing to...
I spent a little time with Chief.
These incredibly...
Hold on one second.
Okay.
I spent a little time with Chief on Friday morning. We discussed some of this.
Yeah.
You know, Shipyard Marine, to put it out at the end of their dock, you know, let's talk about weekends, you know, if we want to put it in on a Friday morning, or a Thursday night, or whatever time it is, and then take it out Sunday after most of the boating traffic's done, that's going to be ideal in the summer months, probably following almost the same schedule as what Brown County does, but just not having ours in the water all the time. You know, weekends is where you're going to get your calls majority of the time. So to have it, you know, working with some of our local companies, I don't know if I'd be comfortable having it at someone, a residential house, but I think having it out there at Shipyard Marine or one of the marinas that we have would be ideal for response time.
Trustee Eckert, you had something?
When this incredibly generous couple offered this, were they offering this or the dollar amount, and this is what you chose with the dollar amount?
So this is, we kind of did a presentation for them, and, you know, boats vary from a hundred thousand to three hundred fifty thousand, I mean, for, you, you want a rescue boat, this isn't your typical fishing boat, because it has unique features on it, be able to sustain, you know, bigger waves and the wind and the rain type of stuff. So, we got quotes that averaged up to, from local vendors in Wisconsin, three hundred fifty thousand dollars, so we wanted most bang for our buck. I mean, you know, we would like a pump on this, but it doesn't have a pump on it. So it's something, trying to maybe work with association, getting some more features on this boat, but this is the best we could do with the two hundred thousand dollars presented.
So you asked for a boat? Not something else?
We, we, I gave him a, I gave him a number that we needed to even, to make it worthwhile to even sustain it.
Let me clarify for you, Chief, sorry. What she's asking is, did they want, this individual wanted to donate a boat, didn't want to go donate a truck, didn't want to, they wanted to donate a boat to the village.
Is that what you're asking, Trustee Eckert?
I think I can speak for myself. I, I mean, did, did you, I mean, you came out and you asked for a boat instead of something that maybe would have already been on the equipment reserve fund?
Uh, yeah, I specifically requested a boat for...
To branch the fire department, apartment out further?
I, I would say to be able to respond to calls that we were not able to respond to in the, in the past, which we requested to. So we requested, in, for most of these calls, we were requested to respond, and our capabilities were limited because of the boat size that we currently have.
I, I don't know if I agree with this. I mean, I, I think your figures for its upkeep are very low, for one. I like that the association thinks that maybe they can keep up with that, but I, it just seems like we're duplicating again, which I kind of think you are on the EMS side.
I wouldn't, like I said, we, the calls that we requested for are in the Bay of Green Bay, I want to say on this, near the Swamaco shoreline, and with our dinghy boat, you know, we, we'll pretty much only allow them about fifty yards out, and these calls tend to be a little further out. People think they're closer to shore than what they are a lot of times, so they're, in essence, usually two hundred, three hundred yards out, and our boat does not have that capability at this time.
You would not be able to take your dinghy into the water, into Dead Horse Bay, around Point?
No.
To the other side of the bay?
Not at all.
In order to help somebody?
No.
Yeah. That, I think, I think that's, that's what I heard, was the need for this boat was not necessarily the number of calls, but the calls that we are getting are calls that we can't respond to because of the, our boat is small.
Correct. It was, it was just a hand-me-down from when they had the sailing club. I mean, it's, it's...
It was a chase boat for the sailing club?
So, I'm sorry, were you done, trustee Eckert? Did you have more questions?
I don't know. I.
More comments?
Yeah, I forgot it, though.
Well, can I ask some questions then?
Sure, go for it.
Thank you. So, um, the three to six calls per year that you get are, what type are they? Because we just heard the Brown County Sheriff tell us that, um, they respond to all of the calls. They don't need any more help, um, but they have a pecking order of calls. So if it's an emergency, they go. But if it's a tow or something like that, they don't. So the three to six calls per year that you've received, what sort of calls are they?
So I will state, um, and this isn't fair to him, because obviously, he's not making those decisions. It's usually the shift lieutenants, so it's not fair to put, throw him under the bus, per se. Um, I will say on those two calls that I referred to, we were requested by the Brown County Sheriff's Department to respond. So we were requested by them.
Okay. Do we have a mutual aid agreement with them?
We do not have a mutual aid agreement with them, at this time.
What types of calls were they, though?
Uh, so they were boaters, and I, so one of them I was not present at. Um, they were, they were boaters that were stranded, um, in the Bay of Green Bay. And actually, one happened to be, uh, we thought was in Swamaco, but it actually ended up being in the Village of Howard. Uh, we did, one, New Franken came around, um, and ended up towing them in, and the other one, um, I, I will call it a tow, but they were more rescued. They were, there was, um, some issues on board, and let's put it that way.
So a tow.
We'll, we'll call it a tow, sure.
What they don't do, that's why they don't call.
I, I will say we were requested by them to respond.
So they weren't in immediate danger?
Um, one call was at eight or nine o'clock at night, and the other one was at six or seven P.M., and we were requested by them to respond, not a tow. The occupants on board were not giving a tow company to call.
If we, um, are you gonna charge for these calls?
Uh, so there would be, we'd have to amend our ordinance, but yes, we would charge for anything that would be considered a tow. Now, if you're experiencing a heart, heart attack, um, on the Bay of Green Bay, you know, I think that's fair to charge for some of that's life-saving. But if, in essence, they said they needed help, but didn't really need help, and we needed to tow them back, um, our, our job is to rescue them, not to tow their boat back.
Have you received a rescue call?
Uh, we have, so for boats that have taken on water, yes.
But trustee Andrews?
So, chief, are you gonna be able to, um, because there, there's gonna be some additional training for this boat?
So we do, you know, no, don't mean to interrupt you. We do, we do have a boat, like I said, it is a smaller boat. We do do annual training on boats, um, so it's not something that's new to our department. It just gives us the ability to respond a little bit further out.
So there won't be additional?
I, I wouldn't say, we would like to send two additional people, or two people down to Milwaukee to form more of a, um, you know, advanced driving course, I guess, if you wanna call it that. But we do do annual training with a boat, and we've actually worked with the sheriff's department on their boat, as well, their airboat.
So I see that this is an amazing, uh, opportunity for us, because of the citizen willing to donate this money. But one of the concerns that I have is, is also a new service, right, a new.
I, I wouldn't, I would interrupt you there, because I wouldn't call it a new service. We are currently responding to calls for rescue or on the Bay of Green Bay, in Swamaco River.
But with a dinghy?
Correct.
Not with the two hundred thousand.
We're limited.
We're, we're limited on what we can respond to. Unfortunately, we, like the last, one of the last calls, we knew our capabilities were, would not be able to respond, so we ended up calling New Franken in.
So the decision that's being made by this board isn't just about the two hundred thousand dollars. It's also about, um, a replacement fund. So we're gonna need to put money aside to replace this boat in twenty years?
I, I would say a boat, I mean, because it's not in the water all the time. We're not using it. I mean, New Franken has had their boat for twenty-two years, and they don't plan installing it anytime soon.
And so it's, so we still have to put a replacement fund in, though?
That would be a board decision. I mean, I don't, it, it's kinda like the.
If we have a service, I don't think we would then pull the service.
Well, we, we may, and this, and that leads me to, to, to my question. So what happens if we get this two hundred thousand dollar boat, we have it here, and maybe three years down the road, five years down the road, you know, there are board members who go, hey, this boat, we really don't use this. We really don't need this. What are we gonna do? How do we re- resolve that boat? Can we, will we have the ability, meaning the Village of Swamaco, to put it up for sale? When it's donated, do we have that latitude with the donation?
Um, so that I wouldn't know, I wouldn't be able to speak for that. I mean, I, I mean, we could offer that up to them. I think it would be fair to go back to the resident and say, you know, we're looking at selling this boat, or do you want this, give them the back of the boat, maybe, or if they wanna sell it, but I wouldn't be able to answer for that. And would they, um, we've not come to an agreement yet, um, that, and Allison fooled it, but they're, they're just, they're just willing to basically write the check and have the village.
I mean, for me personally, I'd like to see that in the agreement, so that we know, you know, I, I, I don't want us to be, if we find that we're not using this asset, I don't want us to be stuck with this asset in perpetu- perpetuity forever.
What if we find we're really using this, and suddenly we're the whole base patrol, and we don't have any guys on land?
Well, I, first of all, we wouldn't put all of our personnel on the boat. Um, typically, we respond with three or four personnel on there. Um, and, and we're not looking to patrol the Bay of Green Bay. That's not our ask. We're not looking to take it to the sheriff's department jurisdiction. Um, looks at all, what we're trying to do is, um, expand our capabilities, because like I said, we are currently called between three and six times a year for water rescues on the Bay of Green Bay, and, um, some of them we had to say no to, because, um, or call other departments, because we don't have the capability to do it.
Are these paid-on-call people that are gonna be for, designated for the boat, or are they gonna be the ones that are currently on the data?
Uh, we would have, we would have somebody during the day trained, and then paid on calls as well.
So they would be taken off of land and not able to respond?
Correct.
And I think that's gonna add to the number of people that you're gonna need. Have you reached out to New Franken?
Yes, I have.
And asked them, okay, what is your budget per year for this boat's operation?
I didn't ask them what their budget is. I know they, they, I mean, they, they bought a used boat, um, when it was, um, and I'm not sure how long they've had their boat, but like I said, I know it's twenty-two years old. But they've, you know, their association has kinda put funds in, um, into new electronics, and I think they damaged their boat last year, and they raised some funds for that. So, um, I don't know what their annual maintenance cost is offhand, but I know just from our boat, currently our boat, and then talking with, um, our full-time man, Scott, um, you know, for oil and filter is what we'd be, pretty much what we need for those, for that boat.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to find out what New Franken is actually seeing in reality. Does that also consider fuel? So you're not, you're not just gonna park the boat and then wait for those three to six times a year. I'm assuming that you would be training exercises and things of that nature?
Yeah, we're, we're not looking to take it out weekly, though, and go on adventure. I mean, that's not, that's not what we're looking for.
And I was not implying that. What I'm, what I'm saying is that, but just training. You need to take it out, because you don't, the first time you deal with something isn't, you don't wanna do that without any kind of preparation, right? So you do have fuel costs that are gonna be in here as well, and I, those are probably minimal. Um, my concern is still back to the, the beginnings. We are adding a greater service, and I'm wondering if this two hundred thousand dollar boat is the right answer. That's kinda where I'm, I'm leaning toward. I was looking at the references I mentioned earlier. Um, these, this is a sort of boat that's used by, um, Secret Service. You know, and I just wonder, is that our need? And could we actually receive a smaller donation? I mean, the two hundred thousand is wonderfully generous, but just because we get a two hundred thousand, is that really, is it fair to the donor, and is it fair to the village who now have to end up paying for this over time, to accept that and say, you know, we got this, we're gonna use it all? Or maybe it's a better choice out there, maybe a hundred thousand dollar boat?
I don't think you're gonna find a fire rescue boat for a hundred thousand dollars, just doing research.
But mostly you use it for towing.
We wouldn't use it for.
We wouldn't use it for towing. Uh, if we, if we towed a boat in, they would definitely be charged. We don't, our, our job is not to tow the boat in, it is to take the occupants on the boat and put them, bring them to, bring them to land.
If we're not gonna use it for towing, then the three to six calls per year, how many are?
Well, no.
I will say, like I said, these, these calls were for, we were requested to rescue somebody off a boat.
Okay.
So the, so the patrol chief or captain just stated to us, and that's why I asked that question, that more resources, more resources they have, they'll utilize them. We're not being asked, right, so it's not fair to say, well, we only have, you know, two or three calls a year. It's not fair to say that when we don't have the asset to be able to manage.
Correct. We do not.
Calls that they're gonna ask us to help with. If we have this asset, we will be asked to help with more calls or rescues.
Or we can address our own calls.
Or we can address our own calls. You know, so, so it's not fair to say, well, you know, we're only gonna use this a couple of times a year. That's, we are going to be called on by the Brown County Sheriff's Department, by whoever calls in nine-one-one dispatch. You know, if there's a boat on fire out in the bay, most likely, we're gonna get called. It's the fire department, probably Green Bay Fire. We'd get called out there, and we can charge for those activities.
Correct.
So, I, what I struggle with is our board, and I'm fiscally conservative, but we're given two hundred thousand dollars to go purchase a boat. A boat that will ultimately, at some point, probably save a life, or more. A boat that will be there, we have a very unique situation where we are. We are on the Bay of Green Bay. Not every community is positioned the way we are with the Swamaco River, with the way we're set up, and for us to have this type of asset that can sit in the water in the weekends during the busy time, that can be deployed relatively quickly, if it's ten minutes, if it's fifteen minutes, if it's twenty minutes, still a hell of a lot quicker than, you know, a boat halfway up the river coming all the way out here. So, is there gonna be costs involved? Yes. Do I think these costs are gonna be pretty minimal over time? Yes. If they train six people, send six guys down to Milwaukee, I don't know if you're gonna do your, your show that you guys go to every other year this next year. So you could train people there and send them down to this instead, and it's gonna be less money. I mean, I, I think we're, I think we're arguing about dollars and cents, relatively to, to what the capability is, or the new capability for our fire department. I, I don't have any issues with this. I think this is, um, extremely generous of the people donating the money, um, and, and for us to have another tool in our toolbox to help people. We have trucks, we have rust trucks, we have, um,
Side-by-side?
Side-by-side. We have, we have all the different assets to be able to rescue people wherever they may be. Some of those are donated assets. Um, some of them we have to actually pay for as, as a community. But if the association's gonna help with offsetting some of these costs and help with the training, it, there's not gonna be huge annual expense to having this boat in our toolbox of tools for our fire department.
And you can be mad at us.
I'm not mad at anyone.
If we have concerns, but we're concerned. This is adding a service that I don't think we're gonna have the manpower for at budget time. You're gonna want a lot more hours, just like with EMS.
I wouldn't say, like I said, I mean, you charge even for one call or two calls, and you pretty much, we don't, we currently do not charge. In our ordinance, we, we'd have to change it, obviously. We don't charge that. It states we can charge for, um, accident calls, for hazmat calls, and then for unauthorized burns or illegal burns. Um, so we'd have to amend our ordinance, but we currently, at this time, can't charge for that service. We'd have to amend that service. So, um, we've not, in the past, charged for water rescue calls, because it hasn't been our ordinance. So, and it wasn't a big deal. So, but in, in theoretically, one or two calls charging would cover your cost.
So a boat accident out there, we can charge for. A boat on fire, we can charge for. If we decide to tow someone, we could charge for it. We could say, this is what it's gonna cost you to bring it back in.
Oh, other places would do charge.
Right. So we could, we could charge all of those fees. The only thing that I don't think we're really gonna charge for is a true EMS call out in the bay.
Correct.
Or, or a capsized boat, or something like that.
An emergency rescue.
True emergency rescue.
And I know the sheriff's.
Accidents can be true emergency, but you still charge for an accident, right? Even though someone gets hurt here on the roads, you charge for that accident.
The sheriff's department does charge.
So now we're gonna be rescuers, we're gonna be towers, we're gonna be, now we're adding like three or four different services on.
Fire department are rescuers.
Uh, I know, rescue on the water, rescue, okay.
Swamaco is, is a part of the water. We, we have, that's part of us. They, they offered money, decided to go in this direction. I don't have a problem with it at all. I think it's wonderful and totally generous of them to do that. The only thing I'm looking for is for, not for you to come by later and say, well, we need some more money on our budget, because guess what? It's not gonna happen.
That's going to happen.
Get this the way you want it, with the association and the training and stuff like that, so it comes out to near net zero. I don't have a problem with it one iota, but it's incumbent on you to do that, because as soon as it starts costing, on it goes.
And I think to help clarify a, a concern that trustee Rodden had, um, one of the items that the sheriff mentioned, when I asked him the question, is he's, they never feel like they're shorthanded. And I also, I'm good with the idea of the donation. I'm good with the idea of the boat. My concern is that, as we sit here as a board, we're adding a larger commitment to the village, okay? And I, it's a good commitment. It boils down to, if we add an equipment replacement fund, it'd be a dollar per person per year. That's what it boils down to. But I, I don't wanna do that as a, awesome, we just got this great donation, which it is a great donation, and let's just do it, right? I think we need to think it through a little bit. We need to dot our i's and cross our t's, so we understand the impact of this in the long term. When I see the, when I see the numbers here on, on the values, I see three hundred and forty-six plus five hundred dollars. I know, I mean, we're gonna be talking about annual renewals, annual training, but that's important to consider, right? So when you're making a financial decision, it's not the question of, oh, no, it's no good, we're not gonna do this because of this. It's more of, okay, what are we looking at here? What's our future gonna look like? What are we gonna have to put money aside for, and what are we gonna prepare for? So when we're looking at this, I, I'm seeing this as a great opportunity, but we need to know what those costs are gonna be, and we need to know how we're gonna hand it, handle it. If the fire association helps us, awesome, but what if they don't? What if they can't? Right? We, as a village, need to be able to man, to manage this new expense in a way that's fair to our, to our citizens. So that's my, that's my concern. It's not about the boat. It's not about getting the boat. Maybe a less expensive boat might be better, that still does the job, but like you, maybe, you probably just picked this out just because you had to pick something out.
Um, I, yeah, I tried to fit something that we could even, not to interrupt you, but, um, that we could, that would fit in even this price range, and it was difficult. Uh, we had to go, basically, this vendor was out east, even to get even the price range. We, we're looking, most fire rescue boats, but is three hundred fifty thousand dollars.
You also want a boat, I mean, you know, quite honestly, I mean, it, we have a, we have a company right in downtown Green Bay that builds boats like this.
Three hundred fifty thousand dollars?
Yeah, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. My point is, anybody who has spent any time out on the bay, and I'm not the boater that you are, trustee Andrews, or many people, but I've been out on the bay, and I know how quickly that turns and that changes, and how dangerous that can be. And as I mentioned, if we're gonna put in a little dinghy, or a hundred thousand dollar boat, it might be fine in Dead Horse Bay, but once it gets around the, once it gets around Long Tail, or has to go as far as Little Tail, or get on the open bay, forget it. And, you know, that's when you're gonna want a two hundred thousand dollar solid hull boat that's got three hundred horsepower behind it to get to that rescue. You know, I, I echo to some degree, you know, my concern with this is this idea of, okay, great, we're gonna get a two hundred thousand dollar boat. This is a fantastic opportunity. This is a fantastic asset for a village that is on the water, right? This is a great thing. But long-term, the cost of this, right? And we all know, we've had discussions about the fire department and budget before. This is a rescue element. This is a rescue asset. I'm okay with this. However, if when we get to budget time, and we talk about replacement value, you brought that, replacement costs, you brought that up, trustee Roden. One of the first things I would be looking at on this, in terms of when replacement or additional equipment or anything else is brought up on this, what's the usage? What has been our usage? I, I'm, I, I think this is an opportunity for us to get a boat, to put it to work, to see how valuable an asset it is. If it's not a valuable asset, it can be a cut, and that's why I would like to see that in the agreement. Um, the asset can be cut as easily as it can be added. So, sorry, administer.
Sure. So I did speak to our attorney about having some type of agreement that would come with this boat, and they actually advised on not having one with the mindset of, it can only handcuff you in the further, or in the future. So if you say in five years, decide, oh, we don't want this anymore, I think you just do the right thing, and you go, hey, donors, we're gonna sell this boat, and we're gonna give the money back to you. And if they wanna do something different with that money, great, but you don't need an agreement.
Okay.
And our attorney advised against it.
Okay.
And I knew, I know, talking to a few, um, people that have these boats, the, these boat values, you know, if not increase over time, because they are a rarity, um, and do obviously cost a lot of money, so you're not, you're not really gonna, if you were to sell it in five years, you're not gonna get a hundred thousand dollars. You're probably gonna get the two hundred, if not more.
I'm also gonna echo what, what trustee Schneider said, which is, is the fact that budgetarily, and looking at this boat, right? I mean, you, you as chief are taking on a responsibility for this asset to make sure that this stays in budget. So that doesn't mean that it's now two hundred and ten thousand dollars, or that we need this, or we need that, or we need the other thing. This has to prove itself. It has to show itself in terms of data and value, value to the community and the citizens. And then, you know, maybe we can talk about additional assets added to that boat, you know, once we, once we see that value. But it's a, it's a, you'd, you'd be very aware. I mean, in addition to everything else you have, you're taking on another asset to manage budgetarily, and that, with, with that comes significant additional responsibility.
Because when something on this breaks, it isn't cheap.
Oh, I know.
Oh, yeah, it's not.
Unless you have to. You have a boat, so.
I, I grew up on a boat, but I don't have, personally, I have a boat anymore, no.
Kay, Kay, would this be a separate line?
You know what boat stands for? Break out another thousand. Everything is in thousands when it comes to boats.
Could you make this a, so in the chief's budget?
You're scaring me now.
Obviously, you have line items, right? You know, can water rescue be a line item that we add, so we can monitor it?
I had envisioned, thinking about stuff for twenty twenty-four, that we could have wages split for fire, EMS, and then if you're gonna add this for boat.
Right. And then you can also have the.
And other, the other accounts that all go with it, like fuel for the fire trucks, and then fuel for boat, so that when we get to budgeting, or you need a report, um, about how much is this service costing, that I can isolate that out and tell you it's cost, you know, five thousand dollars this year to run the boat, and you had this many calls.
And it's been offset by these, and you can segregate the revenues as well, right?
Right, like donations from the association. Yeah, I would show that on that report.
Would it also show, just, would it show charges? You know, so, you know, this call, we generated this, or revenue, revenue, revenues associated. Would it also show, just, would it show charges, you know, so, you know, this call, we generated this, or revenue, revenue, revenues associated with donations, yes, but revenues also associated with?
With the billing?
With the billings.
If there were, yeah. Yeah, we could split that out.
That would be perfect.
That would be good, yeah. I like that. Then you get very, it's all right there.
Right. What you had coming in cash-wise and what you had going on cash.
Trusty Andrews had something.
So I'll just wrap up my part of it here on this topic is, I echo those same concerns about the budgetary type numbers, and that's gonna be for you to try to keep that very minimal. And secondly, the packet that you did give us tonight, for tonight, was very helpful in, in really laying everything out, what, what's all in, in it, what it comes with, and everything. And I, I wish, for in future references, for when we're doing something, give this kind of stuff to us right away. You know, it kind of helps, you know, would have helped to have it last time.
Yeah, noted.
But very helpful, and for on the Bay of Green Bay, you wouldn't want anything less than a twenty-six-foot boat.
Correct.
Because otherwise, then it's not safe for you to go out.
I mean, they're pushing thirty footers.
I don't even trust a twenty-six footer sometimes.
Right. You heard what?
Yeah, but these, these type of boats are kind of made for that, though.
Correct. And that's why you can't just buy a normal, like, fishing boat for, to your point, for a hundred thousand dollars. These boats are made to sustain that type of water.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to.
Are there other questions? Just one, are there other questions or comments? Trusty Eckert, Trusty Neto, anyone?
No.
Trusty Romes? Nope, then we would look.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution two-three-zero-two-one, authorizing the acceptance of a two hundred thousand dollar donation for the purchase of a fire rescue boat in 2023.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion on the floor to approve resolution two-three-zero-two-one, authorizing the acceptance of the two thousand, two hundred thousand dollar donation for the purchase of a fire rescue boat in 2023, and that motion has been seconded by Trusty Romes.
Alex has something.
Uh, just a clarification on expectations for the board. So if this were to be approved, would it be your expectation that Chief would come back at a future board meeting, saying, hey, this is the boat that I like to move forward on? Maybe he's gotten a couple of quotes, and the board can make a decision on exactly which boat is purchased? Or are you, is your expectation that he would move forward with that boat in your packet?
No, so I think, I think being it's a two hundred thousand dollar purchase from the village, we need a couple quotes. I think it would be good, I mean, I know some of them, you've already looked, but to get official quote from Ace Marine, the local vendor, to get some quotes and, and, you know, kind of apples to apples. I know it's difficult with apparatuses like this, but it would.
Be transparent.
Yeah.
Yeah. I would agree.
Yeah, I think we're approving the concept. My motion is really to approve the concept of, of using that money for a boat.
So let's add, would you mind adding, amending?
A, an amendment to that, to, to go through that process, the bidding process, as well as some of the other topics that we've discussed.
So with the, so the motion has been made to approve twenty-three-zero-two-one, and it's been seconded. Would you still offer that motion with an amendment that, once the donation is accepted, that we receive at least two quotes, and those are brought back to the board?
I think, I think Chief is, he's, he's a leader in our, in our organization. I think he knows our direction.
So I did not, and Alex might, but I think they wanted the purchase of the boat, then they're gonna give the money. Is that correct?
The ones who talked to you.
I don't remember. I don't remember. I think once we sign the agreement with whoever we purchase the boat from, they're gonna wire the funds over.
Yeah, that's fine. But I, you understand the direction of the board. I don't think we need to add all the other language to it.
Okay, you don't need the amendment, but do you, but you do agree in, is it understood that it comes back to the board, then?
He understands that. He understands our direction. He's, Chief is fine.
I wasn't questioning Chief.
Are you fine?
All right. So we have an amendment on the floor to accept the donation of two hundred thousand dollars. That motion has been made and seconded. Any other further comments or questions?
Can we do a roll call?
By all means. Madam Clerk, could we please have a roll call?
Trusty Andrews?
Aye.
Trusty Eckert?
Nay.
Trusty Neto?
Aye.
Trusty Rodden?
Aye.
Trusty Romes?
Aye.
Trusty Schneider?
Aye.
President Vinrazum?
Aye.
Motion carries six to one.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good, robust discussion. All right. Item number ten, Public Works and Utility Items Contract S-two-two-two-one, East Deerfield Road Reconstruction Project. Director Smits, if you would.
All right, thank you. At a prior meeting, the Village Board directed staff to move forward with the design and bidding out to East Deerfield Avenue to help mitigate some of the water that we've seen over the road over the years. We prepared plans and specs, and we had the project bid out, and it kind of encompassed a full curb and some stone. Basically, everything else was held within the existing contract. We had planned to borrow through TID one this year around one point three million for the whole entire sanitary sewer extension project. Uh, we consulted, we consulted with LRS prior to bidding this out, just to make sure they were comfortable with what we were doing. And even with the bids that came in, we're still looking at about like one point two-four total project cost with this addition. So we're still sitting under the one point three threshold that we kind of targeted from the beginning. We opened bids for it on June sixth, and I've attached a bid tab for your review. The construction cost came in at sixty-one thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars. So with a ten percent contingency on this additional work, we'd be looking at an additional total project cost of about sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and five dollars and ninety cents. So tonight, we would be looking for an approval to award contract S-two-two-two-one, the additional work to summer's construction for a base price of sixty-one thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars, and a ten percent contingency, being funded by funds borrowed through TID number one.
TID is good for it?